Chair McCann.
Good evening and welcome to the study session of the Planning Commission. Today is Wednesday, August 16th, 2023. We're in City Hall, and I call this meeting to order. Can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner McCacken.
Here.
Chair Protem Camp.
Here.
Vice Chair Cosgrove.
Here.
And Chair McCann.
Here.
Commissioners Davis and Prescott Lefler indicated to staff that they would either not be here for the study session or would be only able to attend the Planning Commission meeting at 6:00.
Okay, thank you. Our one and only item, item A, is zoning application process and development management team, DMT, review. Can we please have a report?
Yes, good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Adam Atamian. I'm the Deputy Community Development Director and city planner. If you give me one second, I'm going to adjust this so that it's a full screen. All right, well, good evening. Tonight's study session is on zoning application process and development management team review. As I indicated, I serve as the city planner, and with me, we have our Assistant City Engineer and our building official to go and will throughout this presentation, we will cover our respective divisions' areas of input into the DMT process. I'm trying to get one thing lined up here, and I apologize. All right, you know, I apologize. I seem to have lost a couple pages of my notes that I brought up here, but moving right along. So, tonight, we're discussing the zoning application process and the development management team. I wanted to start with the general plan and kind of go, starting with, you know, from broad policies that talk about the city's review, and diving into more detail as we go through. The general plan's governance element discusses a few things. One is consistency in staff recommendations. Our city staff is required by the general plan to make recommendations that are consistent with adopted city policies and plans in state and federal law. We're required to have coordination. Communication among city departments shall be based on close collaboration and information sharing, and shall be internally consistent with information delivered to the end users. And also, monitoring development and city master plans. We will review development proposals and monitor construction and land use to ensure consistency with master plans, as well as the Centennial General Plan. The general plan does define development review in the context of that general plan, which is a high-level planning document. It states that the development review is the comprehensive evaluation of a development and its impact on neighboring properties in the community as a whole, from the standpoint of site and landscape design, architecture, materials, colors, lighting, and signs in accordance with a set of adopted criteria and standards. As it's generally used, the term development review usually refers to a system established in the municipal code whereby projects are reviewed against certain standards and criteria by a specially established design review board or other bodies such as the Planning Commission. So, in the context of review tonight, we're talking about projects that go through the development management team, which, I will say, there are some ministerial permits that are processed through that process, through that team as well. However, what we're talking about tonight is the work that we do in order to prepare a project for a discretionary hearing, such as the zoning administrator, the Planning Commission, or the City Council. I apologize a little bit about the formatting here, but the municipal code codifies the requirements of the general plan in the zoning ordinance in Section 1712 020, under review authorities, and it identifies the planning division. It says the planning division is responsible for the administration of the zoning ordinance, including the following functions. There are more than two, but the two that are applicable to our discussion tonight are: the application process, the planning division shall process applications consistent with goals and policies in the general plan and the zoning ordinance; and also, coordination, that the planning division shall be responsible for coordinating matters related to the administration of this title with other agencies, city departments and divisions, and city boards and commissions. There we go. One thing I will say on this section of the code, the Planning Commission recently recommended, made a recommendation that the City Council should approve the zoning permit streamlining amendments, and in those amendments, we included additional language for this section, which we anticipate being codified. There's not, it's not, it's not an especially controversial section of the code, but it, under coordination, we Plan Commission recommended additional language to describe the DMT and how they fit into the coordination process. So, it's a little bit more clear to applicants that that process is clearly codified. So, the discretionary permit purpose and review process, this information, the next few slides, covers information that is provided in our application packets, and it gives a notice to potential applicants or applicants about what the process is for the zoning permit review. And these are taken for discretionary permits. So, the purpose is that the discretionary permit process is to review development projects to ensure their compliance with the city's general plan, zoning ordinance, and design guidelines. And that process is about 10 steps. Step one is the applicant's consideration of a project. This particular section essentially is that these types of discretionary projects that are applicant-initiated require the applicant to develop their own project. The city staff cannot recommend projects. We cannot design projects for people. Applicants need to come up with their own idea, and then that leads into step two, is a pre-application conference. This is not a requirement, but this is an encouragement that we provide to have applicants, prior to formally submitting an application, come in to the city and talk with planning staff about their zoning permit applications. There are times when we would be pulling in individuals from other divisions or agencies if we see that they may have some major comments about a particular application prior to it being filled out. That way, when an application is submitted, it hopefully is closer to being a complete application than if they do not communicate with us at all, and it's, and there are some major issues with it. Step three is the filing of that application. As we've discussed in previous Planning Commission meetings, the city is in the process of updating our track-it system, our project-tracking software, to allow online submittals. That work is currently underway, and we're hoping to actually have a number of those permits available for planning permits by the end of this month. Currently, the building division does take in some applications electronically, but our two guests, who I failed to introduce, so I will do that now, we have Robert Ferguson, our building official, and Zach Ponson, our Assistant City Engineer. They can speak a little bit more on that if questions arise. But, the filing of an application is essentially just a submittal of the application documents that are specified in the application packet. Depending on the application, different documents may be required, so it's not a, each application is unique in that, in that sense. Step four is the assignment of a case manager. Typically, staff will, supervisory staff will review the applications, determine who has the ability, considering their current caseload and the capacity to take on such a project. They will be assigned. That planner will reach out to the applicant to introduce themselves, give them a little bit of background on the process. Steps five and six tend to track together, so I'll discuss them together. But, step five is determination of an application's completeness. Step six is the development management team review. We're going to go into more depth about the development management team review after the majority of these slides, but essentially, the city, under the Permit Streamlining Act, has 30 days to respond to an applicant about their application, indicating whether the application is complete. And what that means is, and we do get questions about this from the public from time to time, an application is complete when it includes all of the information that is required as part of that particular type of application. It doesn't mean that the project can be approved. It doesn't mean that the project meets all of the development standards that apply. Applicants can, they have the right to apply for whatever they want. Whether they meet the findings or not is a different story. What we're saying is that an application, for example, that is required to have a site plan, is required to have a traffic study, that is required to have elevation drawings, that those documents have been submitted. The, the level of, the level of, I'll say, information, the quality of those documents is not necessarily an issue at this stage. We're just saying, yes, you have a site plan, yes, you have a traffic analysis, yes, you have elevation drawings. The quality of those documents is something that gets reviewed after completeness is determined. What we're trying to do is say, you have submitted a complete application. We have all the information that we need to review it against our, against our standards, so that we can provide the decision-making body with a recommendation as to whether the application could or could not be approved. The development management team has a part in that. There are certain aspects of applications. I'll say, engineering division would generally have more requirements as far as what makes an application complete than others. Things like traffic studies, WQMPs, water quality management plans, those types of things may make an application not complete if they're not submitted.
Can I interrupt?
Yeah.
Why would, why would a traffic study be required, and/or more specifically, a WQMP, at a very preliminary stage when, as the project goes through the process, it might get massaged and changed? And it seems like, after it gets a little bit more kind of settled as to exactly what it is, then you would task them to do those things?
Well.
And I don't know if that's an engineering question or a planning question?
Well, you know, ultimately, I understand your, your concern about how projects may be modified as it goes through the review process, and to potentially do more than one traffic analysis might add additional cost. However, it's the traffic analysis which generally indicates whether the proposed use complies with the standards. That needs to be identified first. So, while the project may change, and that could change the traffic analysis, as far as proposed use is concerned, city staff is not going to know whether the use is compatible with adjacent land uses, does not create any negative externalities without that traffic analysis. So, it's, that's one of those things that's generally needed upfront to inform the rest of the application package. of the application package.
What about a WQMP, more specifically? Because, I mean, it seems like you could condition a project that they have to, you know, before they can pull the building permit or whatever, have a, you know, approved WQMP, but they're going to be required to treat their water, you know, in a way that's acceptable?
Yes, so, and these are great questions. I think what I'll say at this point, and we can dive into more details later, is that how people address their water quali, quality management needs potentially has the effect to change the site design of a proposed project. One of the fundamental things that we're trying to do with the DMT process, which I'll get into a little bit more detail later, is find deal breakers to the project. We want to find them early on. If there's a major problem with a zoning permit request, that while they could get the zoning permit approved, the way that they're designing their project clearly will not get subsequent permits that they need to actually construct the project, we need, we want to make, make that, make that clear upfront. So even though somebody may need a WQMP no matter what, if, if somebody goes through a discretionary process, and that's a condition of approval rather than something that's required as part of the application, then there's a, there's always a likelihood that they would go through potentially three to five months of planning permit processing, only to get to the point after approval that major redesigns of the project need to occur in order for them to get a civil engineering permit. Potentially, similar things could happen with building permits, things, similar things could happen with the Orange County Fire Authority's permitting. So we want to vet all of those things as early in the process as possible. To the extent that we can, we try to keep the amount of studies to the minimum necessary to meet, to make the findings, but there are, there are plenty of projects that are so complex that they really do require quite a bit of upfront loading, as far as the application materials are concerned. While the development management team and the application completeness review tend to track together, what I, what I really mean by that is that the development management team assists in the review of the application's completeness. Once the application is deemed complete, that doesn't mean that they, they are also done with the development management team process. There could still be some lingering concerns about the application that are, that are not, that don't have anything to do with the completeness of the application, but have to do with the quality of the application materials, the specific proposals being made, whether they meet the standards or not, and so we, we may continue through the DMT process to get to the point where the DMT can make conditions of approval that are included as part of what's typically Exhibit 1 of the resolutions, the proposed resolutions for approval of a project. That's the, the fundamental end of the DMT process, is that the DMT supports the project, and they support it with the conditions of approval that are included for the planning commission's review. Once the development management team review is done, city staff does their own internal environmental review. This is generally to determine whether the project can be found to be exempt, or whether a negative declaration or an environmental impact report is required. Depending on what the environmental review process is, has a lot to do with how much time the, the rest of the project is going to take to, to process. Most of the planning commission's projects, or I should say, projects that are presented to the planning commission, tend to have an exemption from CEQA, but that's not always the case. We do have some projects that have a negative declaration, mitigated, mitigated negative declaration, or an EIR, as was discussed by Jenna Burns in a previous planning commission study session on CEQA. Once that process is complete, staff will review the application for final zoning administrator, planning commission preparedness. There are always some final details that need to be worked out, maybe some clarifications need to be made to the plans, just things that, that can help the project through the approval process. That may include design review subcommittee consideration, but ultimately, we're going to step 10, which is to prepare for the zoning administrator, planning commission review. This step 10 has a couple things that need to take place in order to get to that final hearing. One is, staff needs to put together a staff report, proposed resolutions, compiling all the conditions of approval, doing all those things. The other things are public noticing requirements, which would be publishing a notice of the application in the newspaper 10 days before the hearing, mailing out notices to everybody that owns property within 300 feet, and then posting on the property. Between writing the staff reports and doing all the public noticing, that could, that can generally take a month to, two months, depending on the complexity of the, of the So this is a flow chart that is included in our application packets. I do have some copies of these on the back shelf. If this is too hard to read, and I did provide some copies to the planning commissioners, but this basically illustrates the process that I, I just discussed. One of the things that this flow chart does really well is it, is it, is it creates decision points that, that generally occur throughout the process. The first box at the top is the application is received by the planning division. The second below it is the development management team review. This is also, you can see the word incomplete next to it, so those are tracking together. If it, if it is deemed incomplete, then there, the staff requests additional information from the applicant. When that information is provided, again, it goes back up to step one, and while this doesn't happen all that often, you can see that there's a, there's a, there's a loop that could be created here. We do, there are some notable examples of projects that have been in this, I'll call it, initial loop for years. For whatever reason, somebody is just not able to design a project that, that, you know, that, that meets the minimum requirements for the application. There's just certain things that they cannot seem to produce, and until the application is deemed complete, they're going to be, they're going to be in this, in this loop until then. Staff does everything in our power to help people get to the point where their application can be deemed complete. However, we cannot draft documents for people. There is a limit to how much help planning and other city staff can provide as far as applications are concerned. However, once it is deemed complete, you'll notice, it goes to staff to assess the project completeness, and that's kind of part of that, if it's not deemed incomplete. And then it basically describes the, you know, how it goes through the environmental review process, whether it's exempt or requires something additionally. Design review would be next. Staff would go into public, preparing public notice and staff reports, getting the planning commission hearing, and you'll notice at the, at the bottom, there is an appeal period on planning commission decisions. If that does occur, it would go to the city council. Otherwise, staff would follow up at the end to ensure compliance with the conditions of approval, and basically finish out the project and issue the final permit. Since this is a planning commission study session, this flow chart relates to the planning commission applications, and typically, you can see between staff assessing that the project is complete to the point where it gets to a planning commission hearing, generally eight to 16 weeks. That's just a reflection on the typical caseloads that staff has, and the amount of time it just takes to, to process these types of applications. While we are, we take every effort to streamline the process whenever possible, there, there's, there are structural things that do need to occur, legal requirements that need to be met. This process could not be made five days, even if, if we wanted it to be. There's, there is a certain minimal amount of time that's required to process these types of applications. All right, so getting more into DMT, at this point, I'll quickly go over what, what we consider the DMT membership, and then I will turn it over to our, to our guests to talk a little bit more about how they receive projects, how they look at them, what they're looking for, what kinds of comments they, they may provide, how they draft conditions of approval, that, that type of thing. So with the DMT, we have what we call the internal group and the external group. The internal group, depending on the project, could consist of building code compliance, multiple sections within the public works department, which are all identified as engineering, the Orange County Fire Authority, I'll say, engineering parks can be both the, the public works parks facility group, or it could be the beaches, parks, and recreation department, depending on the, what the actual potential impacts of the project are. Police services, planning as well, we are, we, not only do we process these applications and take them through the DMT review, but we are also doing our own review during that time for zoning compliance. Street maintenance or utilities would also be included in the, in the internal city divisions and departments. When I noted that it depends on the application, not every group needs to weigh in on every single project. We do have a development management team agenda that gets sent out every week, the meetings are every Thursday, and all of these groups are included in it. Planning staff does our best to anticipate who is likely to have comments, or who should be looking at these projects, but all of these groups are notified every, every week, and if they look at the agenda and they decide that they would like to, you know, look at a project, see if they have any concerns, they can come in and do that. As far as outside agencies are concerned, the first one is, is for landscaping. While this is, it's identified as the city landscape architect, this is a consultant that works for the city. Right now, it's Summer Murphy's Partners, they're out of Dana Point, and they've been our city landscape architect for, I want to say, 20 years, maybe, maybe even longer. We have waste, or waste hauling is CRNR, and they look at refuse and recycling. Capistrano Unified School District might be consulted. Caltrans would be consulted on projects that potentially impact their right-of-way. The Coastal Commission, Cox Communications, Orange County's emergency management folks, Pacific Bell, SDGNE, the rail authorities, and Southern California Gas. On rare occasions, Camp Hamilton may be notified as well. So those are the, those are the, that's the general makeup of what we consider the DMT membership. At this point, I'll have Robert Ferguson, our building official, go into a little bit of background on, on his input in the DMT process.
If we, before you do that, if we have questions regarding your part of the presentation, should we ask those now or, or later?
If you'd like to ask them now, that's fine. The next slide is questions, and I, I assume that there would be a, a number of questions that, that the three of us could field at the end.
Okay, I could probably hold off.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Robert Ferguson, building official for the city of San Clemente, and my group's in charge of the permitting, planner view, and the inspection of the projects. And while discretionary project is taking a different path to the planning side of the city, really not taking any different path through the building side than a normal project, and the truth is, most of the projects going through DNP, I don't have any questions or comments on. Simple additions, you know, a lot of, what we call them, cell tower modifications, the majority of the projects, I don't have any comments and conditions on. So you guys are seeing the majority of your projects come through without any comments from me?
Adam.
Correct. Yeah, as Adam said, we're looking for deal breakers right up front with just a simple site plan. There's not much to look at, but we're trying to catch them.
And I'll just, I'll add a little bit more. Robert and I had a chance to talk earlier today. There have been some comments in planning commission meetings in the past, asking if building has had a chance to review a particular project. There might be a, a structure that's proposed in a setback, for example. You know, one of the, one of the things that building is, is looking for are those deal breakers, but when it comes to the construction of, of something, the building code would allow construction on, on, on property lines with no setback. There's just certain construction methods and means and methods that you need to meet in order to make that work, and so for a lot of the projects that building doesn't have comments on, they'll have a condition that simply says, you need a building permit after the, prior to construction. So it's more, it can be seen as kind of a warning, just so that people know that once they get this, the entitlement permit obtained, that they don't, that's not enough to give them the right to go out and actually construct the project. They, they need more after that.
And good evening, planning commissioner Zach Ponton, your assistant city engineer for the public works department. As Adam stated, engineering's a little bit more involved in the DMT process. We're, depending on the scope of the project, if it's just a historic house, getting a second-story addition, engineering's not having much concern. A lot of times, you'll see almost in every project, a requirement for sidewalk. That is per our code, that we're looking for notifying people whether or not they need an easement for public sidewalk. That's going to be almost on every project you see in those conditions of approval. But when the bigger projects come in, a new development, planning department's determining the number of parking stalls, but engineering's making sure that that parking layout works and meets our standards, and doesn't have an impact to that public street right-of-way. When we start getting into whether or not a traffic analysis is required, that's an interesting question, because it's kind of, it's not set in code of when and exactly will it be required. Things like a school and queuing for kids' drop-off and pickup that can back out into a public street, we're definitely, definitely going to ask for a queuing traffic study. Valet businesses, which we don't have a lot of, we will ask for a valet study of how that operation's working, timeframes of intervals for each car getting picked up and, and moved and things like that. And so, a lot of times, that discretion is myself at DMT, and I'll look at that project and say, that doesn't look like it's going to have a major impact on the right-of-way. And so recently, you had a new school come into the business park where that did have a queuing study done, and I think you guys did ask, you know, the next project that came in for the fitness, why didn't this require one? And it was just that lot we didn't see is something that would back out into the street, and we didn't see that as a queuing effect on that use. And so we'll kind of make that call on every project that comes in on a traffic study Commissioner McCann, you had a great question on WQMPs. It actually, the city has a state permit with the regional water quality control board, and by that permit, which I consider basically law, because if we violate it, we're looking at major fines, we have to have, if a project is triggering a WQMP, you have to have that preliminary WQMP approved prior to going to a hearing. Like Adam said, there's, if you don't incorporate that design into that project, you could end up in this endless cycle of, okay, you got a hearing, you got approved, oh, now you have this major flaw in your design that has to get put back into it. And so unfortunately, the industry with preliminary WQMPs is... And so unfortunately, the industry with preliminary WQMPs is, you're almost at 90% engineered at that point. So that's one of the negative effects of it, but there's nothing really the city can do about that other than enforce that state regulation that's come down on us. And so that is required as before we move on. Sometimes if a project is, has a little bit more hiccups in the zoning or other areas, the planning department might take it to DRSC and other groups before we get too heavy into that WQMP, just to hopefully help a project along and not see them spend too much in terms of what they have to do. So with that, we also, in engineering, we're looking at that traffic, the onsite circulation, the impacts to the public street. We also coordinate with the trash service. We haven't always had CRNR be a part of our DMT team. And so the environmental group and the utility group is often invited to DMT, but I'm kind of keeping an eye out for them and saying, hey, where's that trash being picked up? Are they staging out on the middle of El Camino Real for 15 minutes while a support truck is bringing out trash deliveries and stuff like that? Because I see it as an impact on my street right-of-way. So I will often be at DMT looking at the utilities, the trash pickup, the environmental side of it too, or asking the planners to make sure that it's routed to those groups for special review. With that, I'm available for any questions too, also.
I have a question, Zach. You may or may not know, I'm also on the other side at times. And what we're seeing more and more of is Public Works is, I don't know if I want to use the word impose, but imposing public improvements as part of an approval. I'm not suggesting that the city does that, but is that something that you consider at that early stage, that DMT stage? If there's, let's say there's a street light or something that could be impacted?
Yes, that is an excellent question, especially if you're dealing with a larger development, especially something like Ralph's that came into town. We were, whether or not they should have signal modifications, the left turn pockets were looked at. The street, could it be widened if you had to? And so those are, we're looking at those really early on because we're already thinking about our conditions of approval on that project. And so especially with, we're near buildout, so it's not as big of an issue, but when things like Talega come in, that DMT process that curated those, you know, hundreds of conditions, looked at which streets were going to be public, private and those types of dedications. And it could be as, but as small as a little, a house or a property on, recently came in on Valencia and El Camino Real, several of those. And we're looking at where those street cuts are, where the ADA ramps are, make sure it's compliant, make sure the street trees all work with the sidewalk. We're kind of making sure that whole picture ties together and make sure that what's going forward meets all applicable codes so that we can recommend approval, hopefully.
Okay, thanks. Do you consider the economic impact on the project when you consider those kinds of improvements or does that come into play?
And when it comes to conditions of approval, we're pretty set in our, what our code requires. It's very rare that a project's big enough that we're going to say dedicate 10 feet of your property for widening of El Camino Real or something. I don't know if that's happened in my time here in 17 years. And so it's very rare that we have huge impacts that'll affect their properties. Things like the WQMPs though are required. And so we have, unfortunately, they have to get those done and that means an engineer's involved, that means soil testing's actually done before you even get to a hearing. It's not something I'm a huge fan of at that state level myself, but at the same time, something we have to enforce. So that does hit the developer's pocketbook pretty big if they trigger those WQMPs.
I can also add a little bit to that as well. When we're talking about a discretionary permit, the amount of review that is conducted by essentially everybody that's involved in the DMT is limited to making, to identifying whether the project can meet the findings. That's fundamentally what it is. If it meets, if it can meet the findings, if a discretionary body makes that determination that it meets the findings, it needs to be approved. If it, discretionary body finds that they cannot make all of the findings, it would be denied. None of the findings talk about the economic impact of projects. That's just not something that is in the planning commissions or the zoning administrators' purview. And for zoning applications that would go to the city council, that would apply to them as well. So that's not an analysis that city staff is going to do. There are, there are a few exceptions of times where the planning staff will look at economic impact, but it's typically not associated with an applicant-initiated project.
I have some other questions, if that's all right.
Sure.
On the entitlement side, there's this 30-day requirement, I guess, for the initial review. Is that a legal requirement?
Yes, that's part of the Permit Streamlining Act, which requires that municipalities, I should say governments in general, when an application is received, they have 30 days, typically 30 days to inform the applicant that the project is either complete or not complete. If it's, if the jurisdiction misses that date, then the application needs to be deemed complete at that point and the process continues. And that's, that was just, that was an effect from cities essentially holding on to permits for a very long time and not processing them. One thing to note on that, when the Permit Streamlining Act initially was put into effect, I want to say it was, at least four decades ago, the, the applications at that time were relatively small and simple compared to today. The amount of documentation, the amount of the plans that are required, the studies that are required today far surpass what was initially, what was required in those days. And however, it's still 30 days. So it's become somewhat of an impact over the years. Trying to get a very complex project reviewed in time to make that determination can often be a stretch. But yes, it is a legal requirement.
So that's a pretty vague description, I guess, whether it's complete. Does that assume, and I don't want to get into the weeds here, but does that assume that all these other agencies, the members of the DMT have looked at it and?
So not everybody, not everyone that would look at a project through the DMT would have comments that would affect the completeness of the application. Most of the determining, the determination of whether the application's complete or not is the planning division's responsibility because we're the ones identifying the specific things that need to be in an application. Engineering does have a few things that also do need to be in there and so they'll, they would have that input as well. But no, most of it is the planning division reviewing their submitted documents.
Okay, thanks.
Quick question. At this stage, like for completeness, would someone have to have done all environmental studies, like looking for species and all that stuff?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, Adam, we've had a number of cases where developers or builders have come in and rather than going through the whole process, they want to do their due diligence and find out if the project's even viable. And we've been lucky enough in some cases that actually they've shown up at design review. Is there a formal process they can do that or is it just kind of, on a per-project basis? Because I mean, we had, what was it, Amazon come in. It didn't go through the whole process. I think we've reviewed it before. The hotel down at Pier Bowl, same kind of situation. Is that available to them so they know they can take that tact?
Yes, so Commissioner, you're referring to our pre-application review process?
Exactly. Should that be in here so they know it when they get the handout?
So that is part of the, that would be part of the pre-application, step two of the application process. However, that's, the pre-application conference is no cost. What that is, is just simply a meeting with planners to go over the general idea of the concept of the project, to flush out any major deal breakers. The pre-application process is a specific process that the planning division has to allow an applicant to submit a proposal, a request, but not an official project. There is a cost to it. Staff bills our time against a deposit account for that project and it's really up to the applicant to let us know how much information they're looking for during that process. We would, will generally always take it through the DMT process to find those major deal breakers. If the applicant elects to and they would like it prior to official submittal, they can also go to the design review subcommittee to get their feedback as well. It cuts down on the amount of time that it may take for a very complex or potentially controversial project to get some basic feedback from the city, especially to inform them about whether, basically the viability of the project, as you indicated.
I have a quick question for you, Adam. The DMT meeting, is that agenda available online?
That's a really good question. I don't think that is available online, but it is a public meeting.
Okay, that's my next question.
Yeah, we do have members of the public that will attend from time to time.
Have to just basically be on an interest list then to get the agenda, like in an email?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and if the commission would like, I'm more than happy to send the DMT agenda to everybody.
I would. I see it as a preview of coming attractions and also I get a lot of questions randomly from people about permits and projects and half of them I've never heard of. And I figure, oh, it's probably going through the ZA or it's just still back upstream somewhere. And I would use this as sort of a way of keeping track of things so when I get questioned by members of the public, I can have an answer.
Yeah, so, yeah. So like I mentioned, it's open to the public because it's open to our applicants. And while there's no, there's, there's really no opportunity for public comments, you know, we, as staff will, you know, generally, you know, allow people to talk in a public forum, but ultimately it's just internal staff and our partner agencies just looking at a project saying, did you get the, did you get everything? Do you have enough to make comments on? Do you have enough or are you ready for conditions of approval? And that's generally what it is. If there's like some major issue, the internal staff will bring that up because one division may want, may see a problem with the layout of something. And if we're working in a silo and they say, oh, this needs to be addressed and the applicant addresses that, oftentimes they could address it in a way that it now creates a problem for another division. So we'll try to air those, sorry, we'll try to air those out so that everybody's aware of kind of other people's issues so that we're not telling the applicant, you know, on one hand, telling the applicant to do something and then on the other hand saying, oh no, another division doesn't like that.
I think the coordination and the value of having all these subject matter experts in the same room at the same time is great. I'm just curious what goes, to see the flow and just see it, you know, then as just out of interest. So that's why I was asking that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will, I'll send the planning commission information on the DMT and the...
So it would just be like an email we would get, here's the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah. Yeah, and it is typically published the day before the meeting because we want to get people into that process as soon as possible, or I should say, projects into that process as soon as possible. If they submit on a Tuesday or even a Wednesday morning, if staff can do a quick review, get it on the next week. It just saves a week during that first 30-day period when we have to return comments.
This has been useful. I appreciate you taking the time to prepare your presentation and give it tonight. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And thanks for coming, you guys too.
All right, well, it's 5:58. If there are no more questions, we've got a time for a two-minute break.
Any other questions? Do we need to move for an adjournment, Jenna? A motion?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn? A second?
I'll second.
He moved, he seconded.
McGough, McGough and Kemp. All in favor of adjourning to the next regular study session till Wednesday, September 6th, 5:00 PM?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of today, Wednesday, August 16th, 2023. I call this meeting to order. And if we could, please have the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Crandall.
Please stand. Following in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could please have a roll call.
Commissioner Crandall?
Here.
Commissioner McCacken?
Here.
Commissioner Prescott?
Here.
Chair Pro Tem Kemp?
Here.
Vice Chair Cosgrove?
Here.
Chair McCann?
Here.
And Commissioner Davis indicated that he would be unavailable at this meeting.
Thank you. Our first item of business is number four, special order of business, special presentation, selection of Planning Commission Chair, Vice Chair, and Chair Pro Tem. Can you lead us in that, please?
Yes, sir. So for the selection of the chair, and we'll be following the city's policy on elections, or selection, I should say. For the chair, I will oversee that nomination and selection process. And then the, the chair that is selected during that process will run the other selections. And our deputy city attorney, Ms. Burns, will assist with that as we go through it. So for the chair, the first step is to take nominations, and everybody can nominate somebody. What we will do then is, for each person in the order in which they were nominated, we will take a vote of the Planning Commission, and the first person that receives a majority of the commission will, would be the chair. Since, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Burns, but since there are six members here, the first person that gets four votes is going to be the, would be the chair. So at this point, I will write down the names of nominated individuals.
I'll go ahead and nominate Commissioner Cosgrove, basically moving the, by the Vice Chair and Pro Tem up a notch. So I think that's appropriate. He's had the experience and is next in line.
And Commissioners, you don't need a second, but if anyone wants to voice a second, that is appropriate as well. I would voice a second.
I'd like to, I think Commissioner McCann is settling in nicely. I'd like to nominate him to continue.
Hearing none, we will take a first vote on Commissioner Cosgrove. I think we should do this by individual vote. It would be easiest if we start down at the end. Yes.
Aye.
No. Aye. This is for you.
I don't even know. I'm staying.
If you want to.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That is four votes as an aye for Commissioner Cosgrove. Since that is the first majority vote taken, Commissioner Cosgrove would be Chair of the Planning Commission. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations. So then does he lead the meeting from, from now on, right?
Yes. Commissioner Cosgrove will lead the elections of the Vice Chair and Chair Pro Tem. And then we have the second item for the Design Review Subcommittee. At this point, I, you can switch seats if you'd like, but since there's only six, you're both in the middle.
Okay. So let's go ahead and open nominations then for Vice Chair.
Can I ask a question? It was Chair, the Vice, or Chair Pro Tem before was Commissioner Kemp, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I would nominate Commissioner Kemp for Vice Chair.
Yeah, we don't need a second.
So we have Commissioner Kemp. Any other nominees for the Vice Chair? Going once? Twice?
Okay.
Okay. We'll close nominations for Vice Chair. Do we need a, should we take a vote, even though we only have the one? I assume it would be unanimous. Well, why don't we just do a voice? You know, all in favor of Commissioner Kemp being our Vice Chair, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations, Vice Chair Kemp.
Thank you.
All right. Let's, on open nominations now for the Chair Pro Tem. Who has interest in serving as the Chair Pro Tem?
I nominate Commissioner McCann.
I'm with that.
What's that?
I second that.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations for Chair Pro Tem?
I will nominate Commissioner McCacken.
I would second that.
Any other nominations? Going once? Okay. I'll close nominations for the Chair Pro Tem.
Chair Cosgrove?
Yes.
One second. Are we, do you have your minutes, okay?
Thank you for asking, but the first nomination was Commissioner McCaffrey?
No, it's Scott.
Ah.
By Commissioner Kemp.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So he would be the first name to do a vote on, so Commissioner Prescott Lefler? How do you say on Scott? McCann asked.
I'm a no.
Okay. Commissioner McCacken?
No.
I would be a yes?
No.
No? Commissioner?
I'm a yes.
Yes, and?
No.
No? Okay. So we have two yeses. Now to the name of Commissioner McCacken as our Chair Pro Tem. Commissioner Prescott Lefler?
Yes.
Commissioner McCacken?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Commissioner?
Yes.
McCann? Commissioner Kemp?
No.
No? And Commissioner Crandall?
Yes.
Yes. So we have five yeses, so congratulations.
Just move everyone down.
Chair Pro Tem, McCacken. All right. The next order of business is item B here on our agenda, which is the selection of our Design Review Subcommittee members, which currently is myself, Vice Chair Kemp, and Commissioner Crandall. And I believe, Commissioner McCann, you are our alternate. So I will.
Chair Cosgrove?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Real quick. I think maybe on this one, it might be interested to see who.
I was just gonna ask, yeah.
Okay. Who's interested in doing that?
Yeah, I'd like to just do a quick straw poll, just go down the line. If you have interest on being in this, just yes or no.
I'm a no, unless you need an alternate.
Okay.
No.
No? I'm there, interested. Commissioner McCann?
I would be happy to be an alternate or backup, but prefer not to be on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm interested.
And, okay. So do we have a consensus then that the three of us that are on it now would just continue? Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion on that, and then we'll deal with the alternate. So I will move that we reappoint myself and Vice Chair Kemp and Commissioner Crandall to another term of serving as our Design Review Subcommittee.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously. Congratulations, and thanks for continuing your service. I do think we make a good team, and it's been working well, so I'm really happy about that. Okay, so.
The alternate.
The alternate. You, do you have a preference, one way or another, if Mr. McCann wants to do it?
I do not. If he, if he wants it, it's yours.
Yeah. I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint Commissioner McCann as our alternate for the DRSC.
I second that.
She's got it.
Okay, we'll give the second to Commissioner Prescott Lefler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thanks for being willing to serve. Before we move on, I did have some thoughts. I, I agree with Vice Chair Kemp that I thought Commissioner McCann's done an outstanding job. And I would have been happy to see him continue, but I will do my best to do as well as he did. So I just want to take a moment and express my gratitude for what you've done as Chair.
Thank you.
I thought you took it to heart. You made sure that everyone got an equal say, and it was treated fairly, and I was really impressed by that. And I would say that it's really contributed, been a good contributor to having a, our teamwork here. And I feel we do work well as a team, and a lot of it was you. So I just want to tell you, thank you very much for that. All right. Next item on our agenda is item number five, which is the minutes from our regular study session, August 8th. Do we have any amendments or comments about the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion by McCacken, second by Crandall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Any comments about the minutes from our regular meeting of the Planning Commission on August the 8th? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion by McCacken, second by Prescott Lefler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
You have one public comment.
Okay.
Section six.
Yes, all right. So the next item on our agenda is all communications, which means any member from the audience can address the commission. We just ask that it be on an item not on our agenda, and that you leave, make your comments limited to three minutes. And we do have one speaker card. Douglas Benrich, please, come on up. We do three minutes simply as just a standard, so that we treat everybody the same. And we have a little system here that starts, once you start, she'll start it, and that light will light green, that stays green for two minutes. And then when you have the last minute, it's yellow. So with that, thanks for being here.
Well, thanks for being here, too. I, I'm a total novice at all this, and I don't really have a statement to make. It's more along the lines of a question. I'm just wondering what the, what the status is of, within San Clemente, of the California proposal of a few years ago, SB 9 and 10. So I'm hoping I can get some, somewhat informed upon what, how that's processing through the city. In other words, is it gonna be going forward, or reserved, or somewhere in the middle, or, or something like that?
I agree. Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for being here and showing interest in that, what's going on there. We typically don't have the opportunity to get into long answers, but maybe, Adam, would you want to do a quick one, and then maybe you can circle back with Mr. Otamian outside the meeting for more information? Would that work for you tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for that question, sir. I will give you my contact info, and we can speak a little bit more offline, but the city has adopted a local ordinance for SB 9, which is our two-unit project, an urban lot split. We do have an application for that as well, for potential projects that wanting to utilize that. SB 10 is a state law that is not, it's, it's, it's something that the city, cities can elect to do, but this city has not elected to take advantage of that law. So at this time, SB 10 does not exist here.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay.
Okay, I guess I'm done.
So we have a satisfied customer?
Should I give you a call?
Very good. Well, thank you for showing interest. All right, we're just gonna continue on with our agenda to item seven, which is our consent calendar. We do have an item on there for item A, the vacancy rate certification. Adam, do we want to take a staff report, or just see if there's questions? How do you want to handle that?
If the, it does not look like we have any members of the public here that would like to pull that item. If the Planning Commission would like to pull that item off the consent calendar, we do have staff here that can provide.
Does anyone want to discuss this? Or is it pretty straightforward? We could just. I'm ready. All right. Looks like we're, everyone's pretty good, so why don't we skip that?
So we would take a, a motion to.
Consent calendar.
Pass the consent calendar, yeah.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by.
McCacken.
Well, I gotta get your title right. So you are Chair Pro Tem McCacken, and seconded by Commissioner Prescott Lefler.
Do we need to do a separate one for CEQA?
No.
You just move the consent calendar, which would include staff recommendations, those two things. I would imagine that would be adequate. Or do you want it read each individual?
No, you just need to, you need to approve the consent calendar and everything on it.
Blows off of it.
It's approved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. We have no further items on the agenda, no new business, old business. So that takes us to commission reports and/or staff reports. Adam, do you have any staff reports?
I do, I do not have anything to report. There will be recognition for our outgoing Chair McCann at the next, should be at the next meeting.
That'd be great.
Depends on the, the production of.
There will be a recognition for our outgoing Chair McCann at the next, should be at the next meeting.
That'd be great.
Depends on the, the production of the gift.
You've got a pretty good attendance record going, so hopefully you'll be here. Does any commissioner have any items they want to bring up?
Actually, I will not be in attendance at the next meeting. I'm out that week.
When are we going to do the circus plans?
Well, then you'll have a little extra time so you can make it a better gift. Did you hear that, Adam? He's not going to be here.
Yes, we, we will adjust appropriately.
No balloon drop.
Perfect. Boy, you're not sharing. All of a sudden, you're not coming anymore. I do think you have a perfect attendance record for the last year. I don't think you've missed a meeting.
I don't know.
I don't think you have. Okay. Do we have a, any other discussion? How about, I will move that we adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission to be held Wednesday, September 6th at 6:00 PM here at the San Clemente City Hall Council Chambers.
Before you do that, actually, can I, I'm looking at the TFA, and I'm not seeing anything on that September 6th agenda. Do you think it's going to be canceled? Or do you know it's going to be canceled?
That one is, at this point, likely to be canceled. However, there are some potential consent calendar items that may, that, that may show up, and those wouldn't require public noticing, so we're maintaining availability for that. Likely, though, it will be canceled.
Should we just make that decision that we want to cancel it and just adjourn to the meeting after that?
At this point in time, I don't, I'm not aware of any product, any items that would be on that agenda. If it's the commission's desire to do that, I, then I would recommend just going ahead and doing that.
I just think if you guys, if it's better if you know it's not happening, if you want to make plans, so what's, what's the consensus here?
I'm okay with it.
Okay with what?
That we cancel it, so that, I mean, we're all here.
How about you, Bart? You care?
I'd be here one way.
Okay.
I would be here one way.
So Adam, if you're okay with us doing that, I will then revise my motion. I would move that we adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission, which would be held on, I guess, Wednesday, September 20th?
That is correct.
Okay. At 6:00 PM here at the San Clemente City Hall Council Chambers. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Chair Pro Tem McCacken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank, thank you.